Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint workshop between the Dennis Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. It is October 30th, 2017. If you'll join me in a salute to the flag.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a joint workshop meeting between the Dennis Board of Selectmen and the Dennis Planning Board. We are honored tonight to have Senator Julian Seer and State Rep. Tim Whelan joining us. Going to lead things off, I guess. Some of the topics we're going to discuss are wastewater, housing, schools, zoning reform, environmental issues. We'll also have a question and answer period. We're going to try and limit it to about an hour and a half. I think that will do, because I know that some have gone a little bit longer, and I think that will work for us. I would also like to mention that Pat Johnson, who is the aide to Senator Seer, is in the room with us tonight as well. So if we need to talk to him about a few things, that would be good. So, gentlemen, leadoff.
Well, thank you so much for having both Representative Whelan and I here. This is actually something that, do you want me to have this on or off?
On.
On, okay. This is actually something that Rep. Whelan and Rep. Peak and others have really made a point of making sure that they go and meet with our select boards and the boards that do all the work across our towns. And that was something that I felt was really important, you know, having worked in state government in public health, prior to this position, I have real appreciation that so much of the work that we do up on Beacon Hill, all of you folks at the town level implement, and so many of the challenges that you have in implementing a whole list of things has to flow through us. So we've made an effort to go to all of the Boards of Selectmen that I represent across the 20 towns, but really thrilled that I can be here, we can be here with both the Select Board and the Planning Board. You know, really want to thank Doria DiMano for suggesting this, actually, Selectmen was honored as well, you as the Planning Board Chair, of having folks getting together. Really want to thank Liz Sullivan as well for the time that she spent with Chairman McCormick and I in my office talking about challenges in Dennis. But really just want to have a conversation. We can give some quick updates, and then would really like to sink our teeth into some of these issues. I think we have a pretty good sense of some updates to give, but I think particularly because we have the Planning Board here and the Select Board here, certainly want to have a conversation about housing and wastewater. But, Tim, any other introductory remarks before we get in?
I'm scribbling down notes here like a madman, and you forget, and you please forgive me, it's been that kind of a day where I've been running around and the opportunity to sit down and collect my thoughts. It's been few and far between, so I'm working right up until the 11th hour here, getting my notes, so I can present them to you in some sort of an easy-to-digest organization. By way of a legislative update, I can tell you that one of the things for me that I've been, has really been kind of the focus for the past several weeks is, both the House and Senate have been debating a criminal justice reform bill. The Senate just worked on theirs, I believe it was last week that you debated yours, Senator.
We stayed until 1:30 in the morning, which was, we started debate at 11:00 in the morning, and we went till 1:30 a.m. the next day. And passed a bill, actually, you know, strong margin, 27 to 10, and a supermajority. So now it's, now it's on to you guys.
It's on to the House, and we're working on the House version of it. And I've been fortunate to build a very close relationship with Representative Claire Cronin, who's the chairwoman, the House Chairwoman of the Joint Committee on the Judiciary, who's been charged with putting together this bill. And there are a couple areas here, and I know that this drills down right to the roots of our community right here, because it deals with the, it deals with the addiction crisis. And a couple of the topics that I've been working directly with her office and with the chairwoman herself, it says it relates to the fentanyl trafficking bill. We did a fentanyl trafficking piece of legislation, and we just need to tie up a loose end on it in this criminal justice reform bill going forward. And it's been an awful lot of work, working between the district attorney's offices across the state, speaking with the sheriff, speaking with local law enforcement, to get some support so that when I go to the chairwoman's office to describe this concern, it's not me just walking up saying, hey, I have a concern. There's a consensus built behind me as well. So I believe that we're in a good position that this loose end is going to be getting tied up. And the other thing that we're starting to see here in Massachusetts is there's a drug called carfentanil. And carfentanil, it's elephant tranquilizer, and this is the baddest, most dangerous stuff on the market, and it's killing people across this country at an untold rate. It's 100 times more potent than fentanyl, and when someone is overdosed on carfentanil, there is not enough Narcan available within a five or 10-mile radius to bring a person back once they've overdosed, just because of the strength of this, the fatality dose, the fatal, the amount that would cause someone to go into a fatal overdose of this particular drug, it's 20 micrograms. 20 micrograms, which is about four grains of sand. So that, believe it or not, carfentanil is not illegal in Massachusetts. It's not listed as a controlled substance. So we've been working, trying to address this in the criminal justice reform bill, and getting it listed as a Class A controlled substance akin to heroin and several of the other more dangerous narcotics that we have out there. And the last thing that we've been working on has been a series of, and this has been long drawn-out conversations, trips up to Boston to sit in an office and talk with people for hours at a time. This, and this is an issue that has come to me from our local law enforcement officials, and this is a synthetic opioid called Pink Death. Pink Death, it's actually something with that name that people are using, that's how desperate the addiction crisis has, how bad the web is that these people get tied up in. It's, its formal name is U-44770. It's sent here from Ching Labs in China, is one of the distributors. And what they had with this, it's four to five times more potent, it's a synthetic opioid, and it's four to five times more potent than heroin. And addicts, up until just a few months ago, were able to go online, order direct from the manufacturer with their credit card, and have this shipped to their house from China, and there was nothing that we could do to stop it. In November, the DEA listed this Pink Death as a controlled substance on their tables, and so now it's controlled at the federal level, but not at the state. The devil in dealing with these synthetics is that these labs have looked at it, they've just changed one little isomer in the chemical composition of it, and what was U-44770 is now being sold as U-44880. One little slight change in the isomer, and this is now not illegal. So we're trying to nail down some of these things as well. It's, it's very dangerous when you look at, when I gave my maiden speech on the floor of the House, and I was describing the dangers and the perils of fentanyl, which was really just starting to come out and really take off in our communities in a very dark way. I stood on the floor of the House and decried the fact that we had 1,400 deaths in the previous year related to overdose in Massachusetts. And when I get up to speak on this criminal justice reform bill, that number will now be north of 2,000. So we continue to march in the wrong direction, we have to tie up these loose ends. And this, like I said, for purposes of me giving you an update, what I've been up to, the vast majority of it over the past couple months has been dealing directly with this. I think that if we're able to address this successfully, we'll be able to save lives, not only here in Dennis, not only here on Cape Cod, but also across the Commonwealth, and hopefully cut down on the, the costs associated with that. When you look at the number of runs that the Dennis Fire Department makes on a daily or on a weekly basis to deal with people who are in overdose and take them to the hospital, what does that cost a local taxpayer as well? So we're doing our best, and that's my update on what's been basically at the forefront of my mind. There are several other topics that we will be discussing tonight, because it hasn't been addiction, trafficking in narcotics completely, and setting everything else aside, but that has been the majority of what I've been doing. And as you can probably tell, I'm very, very passionate about this. As, through my career, I've seen the effects of addiction and with my own two eyes. But we've also been working, I've been working very closely with the Senator, with the rest of the Cape and Islands delegation on some of these issues here that we're going to be talking about. Those are ongoing matters. We just had meetings today with the county, the Senator and I did, related to some concerns. So we're looking forward to a healthy discussion here and updating you. Thank you for inviting us in, because the cooperation that we in the legislature have been able to build with our municipal partners, and most especially, I would say, the relationship that we've been able to build with our friends here in the town of Dennis and Dennis Municipal Government has been fantastic. Thank you.
And, you know, I should say, Tim's been a real leader on this issue for us at the delegation, along with Representative Hunt, and I think something that I've really found just so wonderful is how collaborative this Cape and Islands delegation is. We're only eight of the 200 members in the legislature, as Selectman Turner well knows. But I really found it really refreshing that, you know, in a pretty polarized moment in our country, really appreciate the very collaborative spirit and nature that certainly Representative Whelan brings to this work, and Representative Peak, and Randy Hunt, and the whole rest of the delegation. I think it's something that I feel very fortunate to be a part of, and I think we're very focused on, on Cape and Islands issues. While we're on the open epidemic, if you haven't seen this, the county just put out a look, a report looking at death records from 2004 to 2014, a 10-year period of deaths related to opiate poisoning here on Cape Cod, so in Barnstable County. And some really interesting pieces emerged from this. Of, you know, we're talking hundreds of deaths, of those, 69%, nearly 70% of those individuals that died of an opiate overdose had a high school education or less, meaning that they're straight to work. So they're going right from our high schools into the workforce. And then from, from a, as a employment perspective, from that perspective, 1 in 4, 25%, are involved, were involved in construction, in the trades, and a majority of them are involved in services. So as we as a community are looking at, you know, how we, how do we target interventions? You know, the data only goes up to 2014, death data is sort of notoriously hard to get, sort of real-time, the state's working on that. But I think it just really stuck out to me, is, you know, if you look at, 69% are straight to work, have a high school education or less, and 1 in 4, 25% involved in construction. I found that very illuminating information, and I think just as decision-makers and leaders in our community, I think it's important to consider that. If you look at the epidemiology of this disease, of this epidemic, we are seeing progress across the Commonwealth. That progress has not reflected in the numbers here on Cape Cod and a few other parts in the Commonwealth, and it's really driven by fentanyl and carfentanil that Tim was talking about. So certainly a somber topic, but I think an important one, given that we really are losing a generation and are continuing to.
I think that the statistics that the Senator spoke to also speak very well to the efforts that are going on in the Dennis, Yarmouth Regional School District, the collaboration that they formed with Calmer Choice. They've identified that it's never too young to begin prevention education, try and prevent the next round of addicts from, from growing and developing. And so I just want to take a minute to give them credit for recognizing that, because as the Senator stated, when you're looking at a high percentage like that of folks that are addicted that never completed their high school degree, then that means we have to get to them in middle school, if not before. And again, I credit our very proud, very good local regional school district, the DY schools, for the work that they've done and continue to do and work in that direction. And we are in contact with the Superintendent's Office on a regular basis, and we're looking forward to supporting their prevention efforts in the weeks, months, and years going forward. Excellent. Any other questions or comments?
Just to see if legislatively, if there's anything else you want to bring us up to speed on.
Sure.
I know that you, clearly you've been very involved in this incredibly important initiative. How about you, Senator?
So legislatively, as Representative mentioned, criminal justice reform, the Senate actually just took this up last week. It's been a long time coming. It's certainly a tough set of issues. From the Senate's perspective, really actually, Massachusetts often fashions itself to be a leader on a lot of policy areas. In criminal justice, we haven't been. We've actually lagged behind a number of states, actually states primarily, red states in the middle of the country, who've sort of aggressively looked at strategies to see if they're working, whether or not for the individuals in the criminal justice system, but also from a, from a cost perspective. And so the Senate took up and actually enacted legislation that looks at repealing some mandatory minimums, not for trafficking, at the trafficking level, but other mandatory minimums for lower-level drug offenses. A lot of look and effort has gone into bail reform, and really making sure that, you know, we're not just locking someone up because they can't pay $300 bail. A whole list of other issues that have been looked at. I focus primarily on some juvenile justice components, and really, if you look at the cohort of sort of 17 to 26-year-olds, you know, this, this is the population that if you look at recidivism, they are at highest risk for, if they come into contact in the criminal justice system, for upon release, being involved in it again. I kind of think we've got to look at this population a little differently, different from the juvenile population, but also different from the older adult population. So there was an amendment that was successfully able to get through in that process. It's a big omnibus piece of legislation, so there's a lot in there. I think the Senate kind of, will, will kind of go to a little more of a progressive route. I think the House will be maybe a little more here, and hopefully we'll kind of come out somewhere in the middle in how the process works. The other really big thing that, that we're going to be focusing on and taking up in the Senate side in the next week or so is healthcare reform. So I don't need to tell you folks how significant healthcare costs are for your town. They are as significant as well for the Commonwealth. So in our $40 billion budget, 43% of that budget goes to our Medicaid program, Mass Health. If you incorporate other health and human service programs, that's upwards of 50%. And those are, those are the costs that have been rising. And so if we don't figure out a way to contain those costs, you know, that, that is sort of the biggest driver of, that's the biggest driver in our budget. A lot of funding for a lot of a host of, host of other programs, which are actually pretty important to towns and cities, have actually been level-funded for quite some time. So the Senate is taking, a bill's been proposed, it's quite wonky, but some important things that are in there for us. Telemedicine is something that's going to be, under the Senate proposal, expanded. Also, the ability for EMTs to provide a greater scope of practice. So, you know, if someone in Dennis Fire and Rescue kind of shows up at someone's home, they've got a scrape or a cut, that can be treated there. They don't need to go to the hospital. Currently, they don't have the authority to do that. You show up, you've got to go to the hospital. So efforts along that end. There is some concern around this, looking at this concept of provider price variation. Basically, different hospitals get reimbursed at different rates by private insurers based on that care, based on sort of a negotiation. That's primarily, if you look at sort of marquee hospitals that we have in the Commonwealth, you know, sort of the big three of MGH and the Brigham and Children's, those are, there's an effort to kind of bring in more reimbursement for other hospitals. That is some concern for us here on the Cape, because we have, Cape Cod Healthcare is sort of our sole provider. So we're taking a look at that. But a big, kind of meaty, complicated piece of legislation, the Governor sort of started out talking about this in his FY18 budget proposal. Some changes were made through the budget process. The Senate's taken this up, I think the House, House will follow. But if, looking at sort of the broader scope of everything that's in our budget, it is a pretty significant one. And then the other update, I think is really important for you folks, is just looking at local priorities, which we were successfully able to get a number into the budget. I think over $500,000 on my end, certainly a similar, not if not higher, in, in the House. Those were vetoed by the Governor. We have since voted to override them, or the Senate will be voting shortly to override them. That provides some pretty important money, $100,000 that goes to the Fire Training Academy, money's for Children's Cove, money's for homelessness, so that's coming. And then the piece that I think the delegation is really proud of, and the credit here really goes to Representative Sarah Peak, is the additional $5.1 million that we were able to secure for the Cape Cod Tech project, which was approved by all of you overwhelmingly. And so this is going to mean, it may actually be before the Governor tonight, if not tomorrow. It, it's been included in what's called a supplemental deficiency. So basically, how the state closes out our books for FY17, and it has to be done by October 31st, so tomorrow. And Sarah Peak was able to get this, working with folks in the House and Tim and others, get the Treasurer's Office to approve of this additional, basically, basically giving us an advantage in the formula for the mass school-building authorities, sort of one-time, a one-time tweak, and we were able to do that on the Senate side. And it's a significant amount of resources for our communities. We think it's going to be about $10 million in savings for property taxes, for property taxpayers, over the life of the project. So very proud about that. And then we have a whole host of updates, you know, haven't talked about the wastewater and the zoning pieces, because I think we want to go through those one by one.
It will be, just so it doesn't get lost, once we get into the bullet points here that both esteemed boards asked us to speak about. First off, the reason why that extra money for the Cape Tech got in on the House side, it was filed by Representative Peak, and on the Senate side, it was filed by Senator Seer. So he's certainly giving a lot of the credit to other folks, but he deserves a lot of credit himself as well. At the request of the town of Dennis, I have two bills that I filed that we managed to get through on the House side, they've been engrossed in the House, they're now over on the Senate side. I've spoken with Senator Seer and with Pat Johnson, his Chief of Staff, and these bills, we have high hopes that we'll get them through, they'll be enacted and signed within the next, hopefully, month, month and a half. And one is House 3898, which I filed, which, that the town of Dennis be authorized to establish a solid waste and recycling capital improvement fund. And House 3899, that the town of Dennis be authorized to establish a waterways capital improvement fund. So we're hoping that we'll have those two things done. And this would be in addition to last year, we filed, we managed to get through before the end of last session. There was one that was related to, I believe it was, if memory serves, the money's realized from the solar field over on, over on the transfer station as well. These are the things that we in state government should be doing when the town finds something that is helpful to its operation and makes, makes the town manage its books and operate more smoothly. You come to us, we should be doing this stuff, and we're certainly very, very happy to do it. One of the things that I'm looking forward to, you know, and I'll be talking certainly with you, Liz, going forward, is something to look at. I happened to be reading through a bill just this past week, and it was offered by Leader Mariano from the House, and it, this one related to state retirees. So one of the, one of the things, really, so that we hear from the towns continually is the concern of the rising cost, OPEB costs. And this one here kind of had a pretty neat little idea that is certainly something worth the town looking at, and I'm going to recommend all the towns look at it as well. This bill deals with state retirees, and the towns could look at it for their own devices, but this would continue to keep the vesting at 10 years, but the state contribution to health insurance going forward would be on a sliding scale based upon the number of years of service. So I'll get a copy of that bill to you, Liz, and then you, like I said, you can take a look. I'll be doing the same thing with the four towns that I represent. It's certainly, you know, sometimes you look, got to look for other ideas and look outside the box, and it may have been tried somewhere else. I don't know, I was a state trooper before, I didn't work in the insurance field, but it's certainly worth giving it a fresh look, and, and maybe there'll be a way to find that we can provide, you know, for our retirees, you know, in a very fair way, but also kind of put some of the, a little bit of containment on the, the rising OPEB cost and the crippling municipal budgets. Thank you. Yep. Wastewater.
Wastewater. So, this is something that certainly all of you folks have been grappling with for quite some time. And, you know, as you all know, not only do we have an environmental crisis, but we're under court action. And so, you know, I think that the good news from Beacon Hill is that I think that we may, we're always sort of looking at, all right, how are you going to, we've got a $4 billion problem here on Cape Cod, and under the 208 plan, the state is on the hook for, the state needs to pitch in about 25% of that, hopefully a little more. So, so how do you come up with $1 billion over 30-plus years of a project? That's something that's pretty hard to do from an appropriations perspective, year to year. We think that we, there's an opportunity for revenue that's going to come with expansion of short-term rem occupancy. And this is a topic that you folks are probably well familiar with, around expanding the rem occupancy tax to short-term rentals, to Airbnbs and to others. You know, won't go too into depth of that, just, I think the piece that's important is, the Governor, the Speaker, and the Senate President have all signified a desire to move on this, although, you know, the devil's in the details. On the Senate side, we've actually voted to basically do a clean inclusion of, expansion of rem occupancy. On the House side, there's a few proposals that are out there percolating. The Governor included a proposal, albeit a broad one, that would have not encompassed the Cape in his FY18 budget. But I think this is something that we expect is going to move. And so with rem occupancy, expansion of rem occupancy in the Airbnb tax, there's been a lot of conversation in the delegation about, you know, is this not a way to look at, how do we begin to have the state chip in some resources for the wastewater challenges that we have? Given that the needs that we have from a wastewater perspective are not necessarily driven by those of us who live here year-round, but particularly the folks that we host several months out of the year, and especially this several-week period, the July 4th period, and the sort of last week in July, first three weeks in August, that's what you're having to build your systems towards. And so with expansion of rem occupancy, we think there's a, the folks who are helping or are part of the, contributing to the, affluent, I guess, are paying, are part of, part of the solution. I think the piece that the delegation's been most focused on, and Sarah Peak really has been the lead for the delegation, I think we do have some concerns around specifics relating to who this is going to apply to. There's, there's a bill that's been filed on the House that is, in my opinion, is far overly complicated, establishing various tiers of who would be in and who wouldn't be in. What's been happening now in Boston is they're sort of dealing with, something that we've known had for a long time, but you have individuals who are basically prospecting, where they'll buy up, you know, a brownstone that was four or five apartments, and they're now sort of using them as, basically operating them as like a hotel. So, so we can get into the weeds of that if you want. I think the piece that's important for our conversation here tonight is that we think that this is going to provide, is going to provide an opportunity for us from a revenue perspective. And so what I've been spending a lot of time thinking about, as have members of the delegation, is if we could get additional revenue, you know, what's a specific mechanism, and then where does that money go? And the piece that I focused on is sort of the bucket where these resources would go, because, so one proposal that's out there would be adding a 2.75 surcharge, like a convent, like the same amount of a convention center tax that we have in Boston or Springfield, adding that to rem occupancy excise. You know, where do those dollars go? If the dollars just came right back to Dennis and Chatham, or to Truro or Barnstable, it may or may not actually add up to the amount of money you need, and if you're going to be using it to put under your existing borrowing limit, that's part of a whole larger cap that you have. So we've been working, Sarah Peak and I actually introduced legislation to create a Cape Cod Water Protection Trust. The first iteration of this was a, was to have an entity, a bucket where these dollars could go, where you'd have a board appointed by the various towns, where you could basically make a determination and adjudication of how do you sort of pool, pool resources, and then when projects are ready, kind of funnel resources through that. We've been working in recent weeks with the Treasurer's Office and the Clean Water, the Clean Water Trust existing in the state and the state revolving loan fund, which has very advantageous borrowing rates in itself, and actually trying to figure out how you establish sort of a, a fund within the larger fund in the Treasury, so that our communities could access very, basically borrow very, very cheaply to build projects and could do so in, in an inter-town level. So, you know, certainly, you know, really applaud the tri-town conversations that you folks have been having with Harwich and with Yarmouth, and the idea would be that these resources are ones that could flow to a project like that. You know, so that's sort of what we're chewing on, something that I think we're not going to be taking up from a legislative perspective until, until the new year. But I think really, given that rem occupancy is moving, I think this is going to be, is a really good, probably our best shot we're going to have in quite a long time. I view this as a, as real property tax relief. If we don't come up with our own solution on wastewater, there will be court action, and we will be required to do it, likely at far more of the cost than $4 billion. Another piece that I've been pushing is the islands, both islands, I represent Martha Vinard and Antucket, both of these islands also have similar problems, they just haven't, they weren't sued by the Conservation Law Foundation. So looking to see if we put the islands into this, does that enlarge the pot of money? Does that create more resources? So I think that we're going to see updated language come out, probably in the next month or so, we'd really like feedback, both from the specific town, you know, administrative level, and then more broadly. But, you know, really, really feel fortunate that this, this may be coming and may be happening for proponents who've been trying to make expansion of rem occupancy happen. And again, I, I look to Cleon Turner, this has been something that, that you and Representative Peak and others have worked on for quite some time. And so I'm optimistic that we're at a point where we move, we will move on this quickly from a legislative perspective, which means months or a year, not decades. But I think on the wastewater piece, if we're not But I think on the wastewater piece, if we're not kind of all in this together, I don't know how, at least the municipalities that I represent, particularly here on the mid-Cape, are gonna be able to solve this problem without some support from the state, and I really feel an obligation to come up with some sort of resources. So glad to go further into the specifics of this, we're actually working it out further, so, so welcome input, you know, on these matters, the devil's really in the details. But really credit the folks who've gone before me for getting us to this point where I think we, the state may have something significant to offer these community, our communities.
On my side of those excellent talking points that the senator just brought out, I was trying to look up some stuff here, 'cause I had some emails in my system, and trust me, it's not a problem with your Wi-Fi system or the operator here, it's purely operator error on my part, trying to find a way to log into your Wi-Fi system. I'm about two steps out of the cave, so anyways, one thing that I have been working on closely, and it's, it's involved a lot of conversations with Town Administrator Sullivan, a lot of conversations with Town Administrator Knappick next door in Yarmouth, and this relates to, you know, some of the concept that we have going forward with a tri-town approach to how we're gonna deal with wastewater in Yarmouth and Dennis, and then also Harwich, although I believe it's half of the town of Harwich. One part of the puzzle was achieved this past year, when all three of the towns became community compact towns. Now, how does that weigh on how we're gonna go forward with our wastewater? Here's how. Town Administrator Knappick, it brought up to me that there was, that he'd been speaking with Town Administrator Sullivan, and they had identified a pool of funds that may be available to help with planning going forward and conceptual design, and that money was available through the State Department of Environmental Protection. So what I've done in working with Town Administrator Sullivan, Town Administrator Knappick, we've set up a meeting and on November 20th, and Senator Seier and his staff were excellent in helping us set this up because of his relationship with the commissioner. We have a meeting set up for November 20th with Commissioner Suberg at DEP, and what it's gonna be is, it's gonna be a sit-down, discuss what their application is, more like a personal presentation as well, and to try and put the three towns, to try and put Yarmouth, Dennis, and Harwich in the best possible position to compete for these funds going forward, so that we can, you know, take a good look and see where we're, where we are gonna be going forward. It's great, I have to give all three towns, Liz, all the credit in the world to you and your team for the cooperative effort that we've seen going forward on this, 'cause as we know, as, as we're tackling this wastewater issue, we can't do it on a town-by-town basis, we have to do it, you know, watershed by watershed, and Dennis and Yarmouth share the same watershed. So, it's, it's a smart way, and it's gonna save the taxpayers in the town of Dennis a tremendous amount of money, as well as the taxpayers in the towns of Harwich and Yarmouth.
Yeah, getting into the, the next topic around housing, you know, I really worry that if we can't solve, what, what if, we, we are not able to get some sort of meaningful state support, or, or defray some of the cost of wastewater, that this is gonna go just directly on property taxes, which means, you know, we certainly have a relative, quite rel, quite, most of the towns I represent have a relatively low property tax rate compared to the rest of the state. But what folks don't realize, especially budget writers on Beacon Hill don't realize, and I always run our mind of this, is, you know, we've got a lot of people who live here who are on fixed incomes, and a lot of our families may have bought in quite a long time ago, but, you know, maybe you're land-rich now, but, but that doesn't mean you have a fluid asset. And so, you know, I, I think that part of this is really in looking at how do we preserve our community, and so much of the costs in our community are driven by housing. I think the other piece is that we need wastewater to build the housing that we need. So if you look at the housing market study that the Cape Cod Commission put out, and I, I, we've reviewed the document, I think it's an excellent document, and it really gives a roadmap town-by-town of what our need is, we need over 26,000 units across the Cape. We, you know, if we want to preserve our comm, not, if, if we wanna not preserve, actually, if we want to sustain and have a community in the future, we need to have places for people to live. We have a completely out-of-whack real estate market that is given the desirability of, of our communities for folks to have, you know, homes in, in a few, a few short months of the summer. We've gotta really figure out a way in how to, how to get at this. And I know, you know, I'm speaking to the choir a little bit here, 'cause you've got folks on the planning board, and, I don't know, you know, allies on the select board on this as well. You know, I like to, I, I think that, from my perspective, development's gotten a bad rap on the Cape, I think we've been, but, but I think what, what, what we've done is in having one-acre and two-acre lot zoning with a Title V septic system, is we've basically created an environmental disaster for ourselves, traffic congestion, and we're not actually like, we're not actually being reflective of how our communities indigenously were built, right? So if you go to downtown Dennisport, or Chatham, or Osterville, or Provincetown, these are dense communities that frankly you could not build under our existing zoning. And so, I really feel that if we're able to provide a, a pipeline of support and resources through wastewater and through that infrastructure, it's gonna enable us to build the housing that we need in our, especially in our sort of historic downtowns and building those out. People hear a lot about housing, and they think of someone who looks like me, or someone who looks like a, a younger person, I think this is an issue, and that's very much true for young families, it's also a, a major issue for older adults. We have not built enough housing units to, for folks to downsize into, so many of us, I think of my family, you know, my parents live, they're doing quite well, actually, they're very healthy young 60-year-olds, but they live in a, you know, they have an antique house, and it's a heck of a lot of work, and they're, you know, I, I think, you know, down the road, they'd be interested in, you know, downsizing to something smaller. Well, well, those units are really few and far between, and so, a lot of folks are, are faced with the choice between sticking it out in a, in a much larger home that, you know, traditionally someone would sell and downsize, and a young family could then buy. And so that's, I think, a really important piece when we're talking about housing. We need to have the infrastructure, we need to be focused on making sure that, you know, young families are, are able to make a life in our communities, this is important for our enrollment in our schools. Every single school district I represent on the Cape actually has declining enrollment. Interestingly, that's not the case in Nantucket, they've had a lot of, actually, immigration that's buoyed their school system, and it's been really helpful. But, you know, we also looking at, how do you meet the needs of an aging community and, and a peninsula which is the oldest in the Commonwealth, and one of the third, I think it's the third or fourth oldest county in the country. So I think on housing, I can talk about some of the stuff we're looking at at the state level, there's pretty expansive talk around zoning reform and housing production. A lot of this, though, is stuff that you guys are already doing, or were able to do existing in our towns. I chair the Joint Committee on Community Development and Small Business, this is the committee that has oversight over zoning issues, and likely that we will take up a zoning reform cause and effort, whether or not, the senate took it up last session, whether or not we can get kind of both chambers to move forward on it. I, I do think, though, when it comes to Cape communities, you know, we, we really, you know, hold the keys to our own destiny when it comes to housing, and I think a, a number of the ideas that are being proposed at the state level are being done, or, or can be done in our communities without, without, I guess, meddling from, from those of us on Beacon Hill.
So, as we segue from that right into housing, it was great coming in here and having an opportunity just to get caught up with the town planner, with Dan Fortier. We've been doing a lot of work, I think shortly after I got into office, Dan, you and I started working on building that regular communicative relationship, starting with the work that we've been able to go forward, you, me, and a whole bunch of other stakeholders relating to Project Forward, Forward at the Rock, and that, that housing project as it relates to a very specific group of individuals, it's still, it's still housing, and it's still very, very important. We continue to make progress on that, that's inches rather than yards sometimes that we're making the, the progress on it, but since we picked up the ball and started to run with it, we have not lost one inch of ground, and we're working very closely with Secretary Jay Ash from the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, and his staff to try and get Forward into a good position to compete for some grant monies going forward, which might be the final piece of the puzzle, which is, which is going to put them at the point where they're going to be able to break ground. There's been a lot of relationship building that's been going on with the Department of Developmental Services, bringing them in from the state regulatory level, in addition to the stakeholders that the people at Forward had already brought together, those, you know, being capabilities, as an example, they have Rob Brennan from town here, from Heritage Sands, is helping them as well, and Hack, many other organizations, and many other people with good intentions that are in here helping out. So that's one piece that we've been working on, and it continues, like I said, I can't stand here and, you know, claim that, that the goal has been achieved as of yet, but we're getting really, really close, and it's gonna be a good thing for the community to have here, right in the town of Dennis. Additionally, I've been working very closely with, with Dan, and Dan and my predecessor, Rep. Turner, had come to me, and we had a meeting here in Town Hall, and we were discussing some of the concerns related to making sure that municipalities, when they're looking to develop a veterans' housing project, much as the town of Dennis is working on right now, up on, up on the north side, up on 134, to see if there was any way that we could tweak state law in such a way to protect the municipalities, and make sure that municipalities aren't being punished when they try and do the right thing and take care of those people, those men and women who defended our nation, took off their uniform, came home, and for whatever reason found themselves without housing. So, again, this is one of these things where it's inches rather than yards, we, we've been bouncing around back and forth, and it's taken several months, but again, I think we're getting close to trying to find the right language to use, whether we're going to attack this problem via Chapter 151B, which would be nondiscrimination laws, or Chapter 40B. 151, and I would leave it to Dan Fortier to go into more detail, 'cause he's much more learned in this than I am, but 40B, the problem with 40B is that the work that we've been doing with Chairman Kevin Honan's office, it's become clear that they're reluctant to change 40B much at all, if anything. So we're trying to find a way to bend 151B so that it achieves the goals that were set forth when I had that conversation with Rep. Turner and with Dan Fortier, and through, through a connection, being able to connect Dan so he can speak directly with Sean Tierney, who's the chief of staff in Chairman Honan's office, who's a walking library when it comes to housing issues, housing laws. I think that we're gonna find that, we're gonna have a piece of legislation that we will be able to file soon, but again, it's just a matter of making sure that we get the right language, and getting it in such a way that we know that we're gonna be able to get it through committee, and then hopefully get it to move on to the next phase. I don't wanna just file a bill and have it get stuck in committee because we just didn't, you know, we, we didn't word it right, I wanna make sure that everything's perfect. And I've had a, a pretty decent track record of getting some legislation through, just by taking my time and doing it deliberately, and, and talking to all the stakeholders going forward.
Yeah, the Veterans Project, Tim, thank you for, for spearheading that. We'll also be taking up a housing bond bill, which is something we do every five years, it's gonna start in the House and then come over to the Senate, and I think that's gonna make it happen in, in January. More broadly, on, on looking at housing production, you know, I, I know that there's certainly some controversy in it, sort of a perennial conversation around 40B. I, I think of the communities that I represent, you know, the, the challenges we've got is that, you know, I think we are seeing some affordable housing that's moving forward in our communities, but really we're at a point where, you know, you can't afford to live here, whether it's, you know, rent or, or purchase a home, you know, so that people are struggling if they're making 140, 150% of their median income, which is different than, than other parts of the Commonwealth. I, I do think there's, you know, different factors, but a sort of similar result in greater Boston as well, so optimistic that we're gonna move forward on that. You know, I'm mindful of the clock, and I really wanna have, make sure we're not just talking at you. I think on schools and education, unlikely that we'll be doing anything big this session on education for a host of factors, but I do expect in 2019 there'll be a real conversation about school funding, and actually, this is an idea from, from Selectman Turner, is I think we'd be really interested in getting some feedback from our communities, you know, maybe, maybe in quarterly meetings, preparing for 2019, looking at, is there some consensus around Chapter 70, and just sort of requests from the region, something that's not gonna come up till 2019, and we, we think, I think it'll come up in 2019 in part because there may be some new revenue under, in, in play for education, depending what happens at the ballot, but I think that, that's something to keep our eye on the ball. And I think on environmental issues, you know, glad to answer specific questions you may have, you know, I really view the wastewater projects and, and, and the funding for this as a major environmental accomplishment. We've been working on some legislation as well as it relates to Passuslet application, and then Pilgrim Nuker Power Station continues to be something that I hear from a lot of constituents about, and I filed legislation to strengthen the panel, to give it some more teeth, specifically, they need some resources, and by resources, I mean, I mean, you know, $50,000 or $100,000 to conduct their work. Anything else to add, 'cause I wanna make sure we have a conversation?
Sure.
You give us a mic and we keep going.
I say, every time someone puts a microphone in front of me, you have no idea what you've just done, you put, gave a microphone to a politician, stand by. Just a couple of things to hit on here. Working closely, again, I can't emphasize enough how closely that the delegation works together here, Democrat, Republican, we almost call ourselves the Cape Cod Party up on Beacon Hill, because we kinda operate under our own rules, and the citizens here really come first, and partisanship really just goes out the window, it's what's good for the people here. And an example of that was, was able to work with the senator, with Rep. Peak and other members of the delegation, and what we did was, we brought down locally some experts as it relates to school funding for a forum that we hosted at Monomoy High School, and we sent out notice to school committees, I believe it was through the superintendent's offices, and I believe we also sent them out through, to many town administrators and selectmen, as I could find, in, in my email, as well as I know I had Rebecca working on spreading the word as well. And we brought down for this forum probably two of the best experts as it relates to school funding going forward, existing now in state government, and that would be Chairwoman Alice Peish from Wellesley, she's the chair, the House Chair of the Joint Committee on Education. And we also brought down a woman named Melissa King from the Department of Early, Early and Secondary Education from DESI. They came down, and we had, it was about an hour and a half, two-hour discussion with a presentation by Chairwoman Peish, and then another presentation by Melissa King, and then there was a round of questions as well, just to try and make sure that the mad math that is Chapter 70 and school funding was, was a little easier to understand, and people, people could get the idea of how it worked, and it, it, as we know, it works against us down here on the Cape, where our districts are getting 16 or 17% is their state contribution, and then you go off Cape, and I have colleagues of mine on the other side of the bridge representing urban districts who will tell you in any conversation that 100% is not enough for them in their districts. But the math was explained, and one of the points that came out that Melissa King had mentioned was she said that if every single school district in the state feels they're being short-changed, they're right, but it's also a pretty good idea that they're doing their job in that there's not one school district in the state that feels that they're getting more than they need. So, bringing some of that information down here on the Cape and making it available locally to our local officials, I think was important. Couple other things going forward, couple other notes that I made while the senator was speaking, and my mind was racing, is, the jury's still out right now, MCAS 2.0. MCAS 2.0, it's, it's still a riddle wrapped in an enigma, trying to figure out which way we're gonna go with this. My wife's a school principal, so I live with her all the time, her coming home, looking at our scores. We look at the scores, and we know that DY is a Level III district, but they're all Level I schools with the exception of one Level III school, if memory serves correctly. So it's gonna be hard to extrapolate any growth, and, and, and any growth in numbers in any category now that we've switched to MCAS 2.0, because it's a brand-new animal. And what further complicates things going forward is, DESI is going through some very significant change up at the top right now. Just a few months ago, it was very tragic, Commissioner Mitchell Chester, who was the Commissioner of Department of Early and Secondary Ed, passed away very suddenly. And there's an acting commissioner now, and they have not appointed a permanent commissioner as well. So as you can see, that DESI's in a bit of a flux right now, and I think that that's just going to add to our uncertainty in what the final direction's gonna be, what the final MCAS 2.0 is gonna look like. And then the last notes that I have here is that we are aware of, and we're in regular contact, the senator and I, with Superintendent Woodbury. We're gonna be working with Jack McCarthy up at MSBA, because we know about the school building projects that the DY district is proposing for repairs, and at Wixson and at Matakees as well, that there, there are plans going forward. We're on your team. are plans going forward. We're on your team, we're your best advocates going forward. I remember last time around, I went up to the MSBA hearing in downtown Boston and testified in favor of the DY District. And I know that this time around, when it comes up for its next round of hearings, I know I'll be joined by the Senator as well. Again, we're here for you. We want MSBA to do whatever they can to help make these important projects, these important works at Matice and at Wixson, make them a reality. And we know that that can really only happen if the state kicks in.
Sounds good. I'm going to go back, circle back a little bit for a couple of things because I find that wastewater is probably one of the most important things because it ties in not only housing and environmental issues, but zoning reform as well. And I believe that we need more housing stock, just like you said. It's very, very important. And with the correct wastewater treatment facilities, it'll bring that forward. But I also think that we need to think about our commercial development as well. And that's really, really important. And many times, people forget that we are really a tourism economy. And we look at old motel stock that needs to be repaired, that needs to be brought up to current codes for what the current tourist wants. And I would hazard a guess that if I look in my backyard, I look at one particular property that used to have 120 units and now has around 68. And it had to be reduced in half because the old motel size was too small. So in order for them to attract the tourism customer for today, they had to do it. Well, now, there's half as many people from that. And we look at a lot of that stock. And our tourism base is really important to us. And I just would like to keep that in the forefront because housing is important, but so isn't having those jobs as well. I don't know if anybody else wants to add the two cents, but I think it's a lot of related there.
Yeah, I think, well-made. And that, I think, the, you know, when we look at, when I look at areas where I think the state can help in economic development and where we're a little, in other areas where I think we're a little more clumsy, I think when it comes to infrastructure, we do a really good job in helping out. You know, I think certainly, I'd like to see, I think the delegation would like to see a heck of a lot more in tourism promotion that the state is doing for the Commonwealth. You don't even want to know how little money, as mentioned, that $40 billion budget, I think we spend under $10 million to promote the Commonwealth from a tourism perspective. You know, I think when it comes to a lot of those, a lot of the decisions around, you know, what is the sort of out-of-date motel going to be, going to look like, what is that going to, you know. A lot of that, though, is part of the work that you all do. And I think that that's, you know, vital and important. On the commercial, I think for commercial properties, wastewater treatment provides a very helpful option, is my understanding and my hope.
We had some meetings, a series of meetings on this, as you can well imagine. And we had a meeting down at the Cape Cod Chamber of Commerce. We brought down Jay Ash, again, Secretary of Economic and Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development, who's been a great friend to the Cape and Islands area, as has, as have been the entire Baker-Polito administration. Their entire team have been very, very good to us down here. And one of the, and it was fantastic because we had some of the largest business people and some of the smaller business people, all in the same room. There were about 35 or 40 people. And there were two areas that they kept bringing up. And they said, "It's all about wastewater and it's all about housing for economic development down here. We can't bring companies down here. We can't draw people down here." And then there were, you know, there were several other things that came up, you know, energy costs and all the other things that people like yourself, Selectman McCormick, who owned businesses, you would understand the cost much better than I do. But I remember coming out of that meeting and just really reflecting on that, to a T, everybody was talking about wastewater and housing being the things that are holding Cape Cod back. And that message was brought forward loud and clear to Secretary Ash. And he's committed to working with our delegation going forward to try and address this. And we're going to have to look for creative ways to deal with it. But we certainly recognize the fact that if you have a business that wants to expand, they have to consider, you know, what the costs are going to be to expand their wastewater capacity. If you are trying to bring a large employer down here, like you're seeing all over the news, they're talking about everybody's trying to get Amazon to come to, you know, Boston, Chelsea. By the way, they're going to go to Worcester. You didn't know that. But I'm from Worcester and Worcester's awesome. So.
They're definitely not coming to the Cape.
Do you think that, I mean, it would be unreasonable to expect that we would be able to draw a large employer like that down here just because of the hidden costs associated with dealing with the wastewater issues? Those are the things that we know we have to fix in order for Cape Cod to thrive.
And for the bread and butter of our economy, which, you know, are these small businesses, a lot of them are seasonal. I mean, I think we have our healthcare and service sector. But, you know, this tourism piece, and I'm a little biased because I, you know, like some people in the room, you know, grew up in this industry and it provided a good, you know, good living and a really wonderful experience for my family and for most of the families that I grew up around. I think that if I look at the factor that has changed for my parents' generation versus my generation, you know, my parents were able to kind of wash ashore here and work in restaurants and then build their own business, which was nothing special down here. What's really changed is the cost of housing or the cost of the real estate to have sort of that business. So I think that's why you hear us coming and hitting this. I should have mentioned earlier that the wastewater piece, the Cape Cod Chamber's been a huge leader on this. This has been their number-one policy issue. Wendy Northcross and her board have worked tirelessly on this. They've actually had a wastewater task force that has met. Also now, Andy Gottlieb, who is at the APCC, and Rich Delania of Center for Coastal Studies, working with the Chamber. So this has been an effort that's been really pushed and led by the business community. And I think you'll hear in the delegation, you know, no one likes to talk about, no one likes to talk about sort of additional excises and new taxes, especially my Republican friends and colleagues. But this is something I think.
Taxation is theft.
I think you'll hear, I think you hear from the delegation a real sort of unified voice on this because we all sort of realize how significant a challenge this is and how it kind of really strikes at the core of our future.
Cleon.
Yeah, I just want to circle back, as you said a moment ago, to schools this time and just ask you two gentlemen to put into your schedule, November 6th, November 6th, the Dennis and Yarmouth Boards of Selectmen and the Dennis and Yarmouth Finance Committees and the School Committee are meeting together, I believe at Station Avenue School in Yarmouth, to talk about the issues surrounding Matice and Ezra-Baker and where that is leading us. You will get a very brief but important education on what the heck that's all about. And it is very serious for the two communities at this point in time.
What time is that, Cleon?
I don't know the time yet.
Okay.
And I'll make sure that.
We can make sure to get that to Rep. Wayland.
Thank you.
But November 6th will be the day of that joint meeting of everybody in the area.
Thank you. And you'd like us just to listen, not, great.
Bring a checkbook would be fine.
As my mother taught me, I have two ears and one mouth for a reason.
I just want to add a comment to what Paul was talking about. As I look at the list of issues that we hoped that we could discuss this evening, they're so interrelated. I mean, you really can't pull apart environment from zoning, from wastewater, from housing, and even the schools. And at the end of the day, we are a tourist economy. And if we don't offer people that, the pristine beaches and the vacation experience, there's not a lot else that's going to bring people to Cape Cod. So I know as boards, we're terribly concerned about these things. But sometimes as boards, you feel a little helpless. You feel frustrated. You feel there's not enough money. There's not enough time. There's not enough support. So it's nice to hear that these things are at the tops of your lists. I think it would be helpful to us if you, or at least to me, let us know how we can best support these initiatives to make sure that things happen in a more timely fashion.
Absolutely. And to your point, when you look at, like you said, how interwoven these things are, if we can really turn a corner on housing, if we can turn a corner on wastewater, that's going to create more jobs. That combined with the improvement in our schools, the building of the new Cape Tech School, what's that going to do when you have more jobs, you know, safer environment? It's going to cut down on a lot of the societal ills that we experienced, which I had brought up earlier, such as addiction being an example of that. So you're right, all these, they're all spokes of the same wheel. And I really appreciate you having given us the opportunity, giving us the opportunity to come in here and address them. We're very, very passionate.
Sean, you have a comment?
Thank you. Coming on the heels, certainly of a successful vote for the new Cape Tech and so forth, which I know that, you know, Selectman Turner has been a major cog in the wheel. And then hearing State Senator here with the statistics of, you know, 69% of opiate deaths are high school and less, and 25% come from the construction trades, I think it would behoove us. And I'm sure Mr. Superintendent Sanborn is a bright man. He probably has these figures in front of him. But we may want to reiterate certainly this. And as they move forward, you know, in the building of this new school, you know, to certainly be aware of it. I mean, I'm a little shocked at these numbers myself. But, you know, as they move forward, and I'm certainly a fan of the Tech School, we are in desperate need of young people to be in the trades, whether it be plumbers, electricians, dental hygienists, whatever the case may be, because they offer just about everything there. But I think it would be important to let Superintendent Sanborn and his administration know right now what these issues are so that they can make it a part of their curriculum and hit them right between the eyes with every, you know, entering ninth grader that enters, you know, that school. So just a thought.
Yep. Thank you. You know, Selectman, I think my office is planning and we haven't kind of publicly kind of rolled this out yet, but a request to go before all the school committees and present with Barnstable County Health and Human Services and the staff that worked on this and present sort of a quick 15-minute sort of overview of the data and then have a conversation. I'm not sure, it'd be, I don't know if we're actually capable of doing, in the data of looking at sort of, you know, I'd actually be curious, do students who are coming out of the Cape Tech School who actually have a pretty sort of solid career coming out, whether or not that sort of straight-to-work piece, whether or not that's from folks involved in technical programs or students who are just graduating from, you know, with either a GED or sort of a run-of-the-mill high school diploma. But I think it's something, I have found the data really compelling. I think the other piece, too, that is having a conversation with the trades and construction community, I think the challenge for us is, you know, off Cape, sometimes you have a few big firms, right? And, you know, we really have a lot of smaller firms and contractors in construction. And how do we have that conversation? I know anecdotally from some of my friends and family friends who, you know, are contractors, that for years, they've really struggled to find help and folks who aren't struggling with addiction. But I think the intention to at least sort of bring this to the school committees, there's a lot of great work already that's happening. Representative Wayland talked about Comer Choice and others. But, you know, I think if you look at, if you look at the epidemiology here, we've got to double and triple down to save lives.
One thing that I'd like to bring out is, a lot of local schools, superintendents have taken a pretty aggressive approach to dealing with this and their approach to prevent, as we were discussing earlier, the next round of addicts from being born by getting to these kids even younger. And I think sometimes being more aggressive is a good thing, too, because I think sometimes we give, and I'm speaking as a parent of a 24- and a 22-year-old. I have two daughters. And of course, as they hit their 20s, you find out that they knew a lot of things when they were 16 that I didn't think that they would ever know, you know, because we live in the ivory tower. Being a parent, we think our kids are all angels. But there's, it's kind of a long way around to bring up a point. There was a film that was produced by the LaRusso Family Foundation called Not Yet. And I don't know, there are some people here in this room that have seen it. And some schools, and I can't recall whether DY was one, I know Barnstable was not, but there were a number of schools down here that chose to show this film. It's about an hour-and-a-half film. And it certainly doesn't cross any lines, but it's certainly a direct approach, as the Senator was saying, a direct hit between the eyes in getting the attention of these kids where they're showing pictures of someone when they're 18 years old and it's a beautiful young lady. And here they are at 22 and the effects of addiction have clearly taken a hold of them. Listening to the life stories and the beauty of this movie is it involves children from here on Cape Cod. And a lot of the interviews were being conducted at the Sheriff's Department down in Bourne. So I'm just using this as an example of, you know, we can't be too gentle in how we approach this. We've got to be pretty aggressive in how we're going to approach these addiction prevention measures in dealing with our children because, you know, their lives are at stake and the next generation is at stake as well. And I think that we just can't be aggressive enough.
Cheryl, you have a comment?
I do. Because we were talking about earlier, going, circling back, and forgive me, I have some laryngitis, but we went, we were talking about housing and needing 26,000 units of, you know, workforce housing. My question, my concern is, is I happen to be liaison to the Dennis Housing Authority. And from what I'm understanding, their budget through DHCD is pretty much level-funded for a long time. And I think the town of Dennis has done its share because every year since I've known it, the town has waived their payment in lieu of taxes, which somewhere is around $8,000 to $9,000 a year. And now the Water District is waiving about $3,000 in water charges. And all we ask is that you put, the DHA puts that money back into their buildings, their infrastructure. And I have become a little familiar with these properties lately. And if we're looking to build 26,000 new units, we better start taking care of the ones that we have. And these are elderly and handicap housing, which we don't have enough of. But we do have affordable housing. But we're going to lose them. And they're not going to be a nice place to live. And everyone's going to look at us and say, "Oh, you don't, you can't do this workforce housing because look at what you do for your senior housing, your DHA. Look what you do for that. You haven't put a dime into it. They have fences bent over." And they just don't have the money to do that kind of repair. The pavement's terrible. And they do their absolute best to keep up with what they're doing there in those places. But it's not, I don't think it's a place, if you or I went to there, we'd say, "Oh, I would love to live in one of those places." No, you don't. So I think we need to step up. It's probably for all housing authorities. I don't know if it's just particular to Cape Cod, but you can't level fund anything for this length of time and expect them to maintain what they have.
The problem with that is, I would ultimately say, and I'm going to take the problem, the problem is the state budget. And the state budget continues to grow every year. But what also continues to grow every year is the enrollment in mass health and what the costs are. Ultimately, to state government, what percentage of the state budget goes to pay for healthcare? And right now, 43% of the state budget goes directly to mass health. Do not pass go, do not collect $200. 43%. And that's up, I want to say somewhere in the vicinity of 7% over the past three years. It's right around, it's going up at about 2% per year. We're in a meeting with Secretary Sutter's and looking at the chart that she had drawn out with the number of enrollees in mass health from 2006, when it was Romney Care, forward to where it is now. It's just we're seeing right now, over the past three years, we're seeing an epic number of new enrollments. The total number, the total percentage of state budget that is spent on healthcare, it said 43% goes to mass health. For all healthcare, which would be OPEB and state employees, 52% of the state budget. So over half the state budget goes to pay for healthcare. That is the big elephant in the room that, as the Senator mentioned, we're about to tackle that going forward. And it's going to be, I think it's going to have to be tackled aggressively to contain some of these costs. We've already done some of the reassessments when Governor Baker came in. They did some reassessments that are supposed to be done, I believe, on an annual basis. They hadn't, in some cases, they hadn't been done in two or three years. And they were able to clear from the rolls some people who had gone out and got employment no longer qualified but kept their mass health benefits because why wouldn't I? So we're going to be looking at, I think, recategorizing some people who are getting 100%. This is in the governor's proposal. 100% provided for, looking at what their income is, reassessing that, and moving them over from mass health over to the Health Connector where they have subsidized plans. And they have to have some skin in the game and they have some skin in the game, and they have to make some contribution. We're hoping that we can get some savings that way, and then also, we've already voted, and there's now a fee that employers have to pay when they don't offer a plan, a mass health plan, when they have employees that are on mass health that should be on an employee-sponsored health plan, now those employers are going to be paying a premium to the state as well. And the hope is that with the combination of the two, we'll be able to drive down some of that cost, and just like anything else, you would hope that if we get that total healthcare cost from fifty-two percent, let's say, for instance, down to forty-eight percent, that will free up four percent, one point six billion dollars, that we could put toward other very needy, very, very good programs, such as DHCD and assisting our local housing authorities.
Yeah, I think the healthcare comment, you know, as I had said earlier, you know, I think this is what's really driving the budget crunch in the Commonwealth. A lot of other programs, frankly, have been level-funded, and if you're level-funded, you're lucky. You know, I think to the broader point around, you know, these twenty-six thousand-plus units, this is across Cape Cod, so we're not just talking just twenty-six thousand in Dennis, several points on that, a lot of this is housing that is not sort of Housing Authority housing, or even sort of capital A affordable housing, it's really workforce or market-rate housing that's needed, and I think that's really important. I think I see a number, when I talk to a number of folks, I'll talk about housing, and they think, oh, yeah, you know, that affordable housing development, or the Habitat Humanity development, you know, that's all important, and we need to keep that up, but I think if you look at the needs that we have, we're really talking about housing for folks who, you know, are middle-income, you know, professionals in our community, I think that piece is really critical, and that the only way we're able to do this is some sort of market-driven, you know, approach in some way. In the Housing Bond Bill, there's some significant talk about how do you, how do you really meaningfully get some resources and incentives for workforce housing? You know, the challenge is, is, you know, I was talking to, I sit on the Housing Committee, and I was talking to the Senate Chair, and he's like, yeah, I think we're going to be able to get like, you know, up to a hundred and twenty percent of area median income, you know, for workforce housing, and, you know, I kind of like, you know, laugh a little bit, because I'm like, that's not meeting our need here on the Cape. So details to be worked out there. I would really read the report closely, it's pretty dense, and we can certainly get you folks a copy of that, but I think you're right, how do you maintain housing for, you know, the most vulnerable folks in our community, when you're getting very limited state support, but also, you know, advancing our needs? I mean, I would argue that I think that because we have such a tight housing market, it does put, you have compression on units that would have otherwise be considered sort of more affordable for folks, you have higher earners who are taking up that housing, because it's sort of the only thing that's available, and I think that's another factor as well. So lots of complicating factors, but we hear you on the limited amount of resources that you're getting for the Housing Authority and a myriad of others.
Paul, could I throw one thing in, totally off of everything you've talked about so far, so new item, flood insurance. The Rep. Wayland has worked with me on flood insurance issues for his entire time, probably from the first day he arrived there he was hearing from us. The National Flood Insurance Program is about to be reauthorized. There is this belief among many in Congress that people who live in coastal flood zones are millionaires, and that we can afford to pay a lot more for flood insurance. The town of Dennis has about five thousand housing units in the flood zone, many of them have appraised values of under two hundred thousand dollars, but they're going to, they are elderly, are working poor, and they're going to see their flood insurance costs go through the roof if one of the two packages were to pass. I think it's important for our delegation from the Cape to be working and hounding Congressman Keating, Senator Warren, about flood insurance reauthorization. There are two bills pending, one is a lot better than the other, but in both cases, they kind of think coastal flood zone is millionaire properties, and that, you know, they have no real recognition of what we're like here on the Cape or in other coastal communities, and so it's something important that we work on and move forward. There's one thing in there that might have an interesting aspect for the Cape, or even for Massachusetts, and it's the idea of creating a pilot program that could create a local insurance program that could replace FEMA within the region, and, you know, this left it wide open, pilot program, tell us what you do, and if that gets through, we may want to work with our delegation to see if something could be done, either on the county basis or on the statewide basis, for disaster insurance in general, not just for flood insurance, that could actually be a major cost savings for everybody.
And you know how highly I regard your talents and your knowledge in the area of flood insurance, and I believe I've introduced you to a number of people as being my favorite expert on the topic of flood insurance, and you're certainly a very, very strong advocate. If you could make sure to get me, those are pieces of federal legislation you're speaking of, if you could get to me and the Senator, information about those bill numbers, and what we'll do is, we'll see if we can put together a delegation letter, and maybe even the Coastal Caucus to sign a letter, and we can send it down to both Senators, to Congressman Keating and any of the other congressmen, because again, the Coastal Caucus would be from, you know, New York to Rhode Island, and see if we can get some support for that. I'll certainly read through the legislation, but history has proven to me that you know your stuff when it comes to this, and I certainly trust your judgment, and I'm looking forward to getting that information.
I just wanted to thank you both for coming, I'm not wrapping up by any means, but in case I don't get another opportunity to speak. I appreciate all the efforts that you do on behalf of Dennis, and the collaborative efforts that are well noted in the communities that we're working with, it certainly makes our job as administrators easier when we know we have your support and backing, and helping us set up these significant meetings in Boston, so I appreciate that. One thing I just wanted to just point out, circling way back to wastewater, Dennis is moving forward, we've, the town has been working for years on our wastewater planning efforts, and most recently, last year, the town changed the committee from a task force, it transitioned to a wastewater implementation committee, and we're working monthly on the goals of that, which is working of a larger goal towards our wastewater comprehensive management plan, that's being filed with MIPA and the Cape Cod Commission. In fact, later, next month, we will be presenting our cost recovery plan to the town, to the committee, to the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and we're following closely this idea of the surcharge. I, you know, personally think it has some good content to it, I have heard from a lot of people that are following it, different ideas, and I had a chance to speak with Senator Seer on this, because there is this concern about the money being collected into a larger pot and not going directly back to the community, and what if certain towns are further along, and we're competing against each other? So I would welcome the opportunity to be able to have the boards look at that and offer comments, so I was glad to hear that you said that that's going to be an option. The board might remember, we, the Cape Cod Managers Association, there was a letter that went, and Dennis, it wasn't that they didn't support the efforts, but they felt the board had said, and certainly not speaking for anyone, but it was that they felt they needed some more information at the time before they were ready to go ahead and endorse it, and it sounds like that's exactly what's happening, you know, it's still being developed.
Yep, and the reason, I should just say, part of the reason we moved so quickly on it initially is that, so I'm learning, and I think Representative Wayland and Selectman Turner and others would appreciate that. The legislature, we tend to move very, very slowly, and then we'll move very quickly. And so there was a possibility that, a very serious possibility, that expansion of room occupancy would have occurred through the FY18 budget process, and so there was sort of a scramble on our end to say, all right, hey, if this train's moving, we might have to get something in there, at least to have a placeholder to go into conference committee to negotiate that, and so that was sort of the initial sort of, maybe a six-week-long effort around working with the chamber, working with the delegation, a whole host of stakeholders, to pull some sort of proposal together, and, you know, I think fortunately, at least from a legislative time perspective, we have more time than we initially thought, you know, but really always welcome, you know, your input and feedback on this legislation, any legislation. Sometimes we, you know, I will not, we will not see specific things in legislation that could be a real headache for you, or a real boon for you, and so please, you know, don't be shy about conveying that.
We appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, just speaking to that, can you explain a little bit more about the tax and how it would affect, we're talking about housing for local businesses and trying to get hotels to do better and to bring tourism and all that stuff, and on the other hand, we've been talking about costs and all that stuff, but now we're talking about more costs for businesses to be able to have, like, because we're not, we haven't created infrastructure here to keep the people here, so we get a huge influx, and we're trying to keep all these people happy and wanting to come here, and now we're talking about taxing the people that are providing temporary housing, say, they're bringing in J-1s because they can't find local people here, because we've regulated them, all the families off the Cape, so we're talking about more costs to a business that's already overtaxed anyways, nine percent for the hotels, now you're talking about, like, you know, another two point seven five, and where's the logic in that?
So, excellent question. The issues of short-term housing, J-1s, H2Bs, you rent your house out or cottage out for summer, that doesn't apply to any of the conversations that are being talked about around expansion of room occupancy? This is actually something that the business community, and especially motel and hotel owners, have really pushed. They argue it's a fairness issue, and I tend to agree with them. Why should, if an individual happens to stay at a, you know, motel, they're going to be paying five point seven percent state occupancy, and then they're going to be paying a local excise, that's between two and six percent, I believe here in Dennis we're at four, but if you want, if you go and stay at a cottage that's an Airbnb right down the corner, you're not paying any of that, and so we've heard loud and clear, and actually I think for over a decade, I think Sarah Peak started working on this when she first went through the legislature eleven years ago, we've heard loud and clear around this being an equity issue and around leveling the playing field. I think there's still some conversation about, you know, on one end, I think initially you're sort of, all right, we'll just take, the state can take sort of a chunk of the local money, or even maybe a chunk of the state money, all right, and sort of dedicate that to that stream. I think a lot of our communities have been looking towards the expansion of room occupancy, which will bring significant resources just directly to your town, that you folks probably have a whole list of things that you want to spend it on, maybe it's the Housing Authority, I know in Wallfleet they've got a harbor that's all dredged up, and so the thought was that, all right, if we, and this is all sort of up to conversation, but if we sort of kind of stick our hands into that between two and six percent, that comes directly to the towns, that's not kind of, that's actually, you know, just moving money around but not really helping the town. You know, we're working currently on analysis to see sort of what would that need be, we need about twenty million a year, and the two point seven five number was sort of what was sort of put out, has been put out there by Representative Peak as a conversation starter. You know, I don't know where we'll land, but I think we've got to figure out a way to, you know, to pay for this, and, you know, from my perspective, you know, I'd rather ask, I think the other piece that's important is that the chamber's done a lot of work and research on looking at, all right, what's, where are consumers sort of price-sensitive, right, and what are other states and municipalities and cities doing? And you have to go as far south as Delaware to find a state that doesn't have expansion of room occupancy, so we feel pretty confident that, you know, someone's not going to choose to go to the Jersey Shore over Cape Cod based on the fact now that, you know, we have a room occupancy on an Airbnb or on a short-term rental. I think a lot of us in the delegation and broadly in the community don't sort of buy the argument that, you know, the individual who's renting, or the family's renting a home for eight thousand dollars a week, you know, is sort of price-sensitive in that way. I think the piece that I'm most concerned about personally are for the individuals, and I know Representative Wayland shares this concern, right, for those of us who sort of do the shuffle to sort of make ends meet, whether to pay the mortgage or to pay the property taxes, I'm a little worried about that and that piece, but I think that we've got to find a way to, you know, I'm really interested, you know, how do we find a way to come up with resources that don't fall directly on the backs of property taxpayers? And I think expansion of room occupancy, sort of this is a train that's moving, and I think is also something that is relatively tied, I mean, it's almost a use fee, right? And so that's kind of the thinking here, and really making, wanting to make sure that we're not overly burdening, especially the people who live in our communities, and property taxpayers being businesses as well. So that's some of the thinking and thought here. You know, I think as a delegation, I think we're still waiting to look and see what this looks like as it emerges from the broader, from the broader proposal, and I think also looking at, okay, what do we specifically need, what sort of percentage would get us over the top from a resource perspective? So that's some of the thinking and how we kind of got there, but certainly would not impact J-1s or H2Bs, or, you know, my family used to have housing that you, you know, you'd house your workers, that's not affected.
To answer your question, Jeff.
I'd like to, just a second.
No, go ahead, Claire.
Well, my head is thinking of it, I don't want to address Jeff's concern. Having been, having been the first legislator to file that legislation in the legislature fourteen, sixteen years ago, now, I can tell you that the Cape Chamber of Commerce was dead-set against it, until they did the research and educated themselves, now they support it. I'll give you the best example of the equity, and as Senator Seer said, it's easy to exempt employers who are paying for their employees to live on the Cape, but the equity is easily explained using Ocean Edge as an example. Ocean Edge has dozens of condominiums that they own, they also have dozens of condominiums that they've sold to other people. If you own a Ocean Edge condominium right next to a condominium that Ocean Edge owns themselves, you rent yours, they rent theirs, they have to pay the tax, and you don't, or your visitors don't. Where's the equity in that? That's where the level playing field comes in. Same with Sarah Peak, for example, she owns a bed and breakfast in Provincetown. A bed and breakfast with three or less rooms does not pay the tax, one more room, you have to pay the tax. Again, leveling the playing field, and as the Senator said, as far down as Delaware, there's not an issue here. Massachusetts is surrounded by states that already have this, Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, New York, and either Connecticut or Rhode Island, there's one of those states, either Connecticut or Rhode Island, that doesn't have it, but the rest of the states that surround us already have this. So it's, it makes perfect sense.
I just hear a lot of problems here, and a lot of costs, and I hear, you know, when you think about it, you think about, what do we do? We enacted the land bank, okay, the land bank buys up all the land, drives up all the costs, you know, to find housing, especially even in places like Dennis that were ninety-five percent built out. Now you're taxing the people one percent on the way in, one percent on the way out, we're talking about taxing employers or having them pay extra money for, you know, insurance, and you just, all you hear, you hear forty-three percent insurance costs, and what are we doing here? We keep rising and rising and rising, and saying we can afford more and more, when the reality is, you can't. And so, you know, being a native Cape Codder and trying to make your way out of the situation that you're born into, you know, maybe you buy a house and, or two, and you want to rent them out, and you're trying to figure a way so that you can see around your family, but we just, we're missing the ball here, I think. You know, we have huge insurance costs, that's the number-one thing, I think we have to, we should employ you guys to go after that. Number one, killing us, absolutely killing us, the state is eating up all the money with forty-three percent, you know, that's where we need to start, you know, not, how do we grab a little bit more here, a little bit more there? How about controlling the costs?
Don't feel bad, Jeff, I'm on record, I'm opposed to expanding the rooms tax, and I will vote accordingly. I recognize that this session, we're probably going to see something get passed. There's kind of a, like an unstoppable force that's going on right now, and it began with B&amp;B asking to be taxed, like I said, just on general principle, I'm opposed to new taxes, I think that... I think that someone else's money, and you never see taxes go down, they only seem to keep going up and up and up. So my big concern, as the Senator had brought up, is looking at what we have, that this is likely to go through, is, I have a lot of friends, as I know a lot of people here in this room and a lot of people maybe watching at home, a lot of people who rent their homes and they move off Cape, as the Senator was talking about doing the shuffle. So I'm going to be interested in looking at what they, they proposed this in Brewster, and it didn't pass, but I'd like to get it through as an amendment, which would be to give an exception to this for primary residences. So when someone, one of our neighbors has to move either down to Nicholson State Park or move off Cape with their in-laws, get them an exception so that they can, they're not getting taxed on the money that they desperately need, just so that they can afford their mortgage, their real estate taxes and everything else.
That's great.
So try and make it as palatable as possible and as soft a landing as possible, because I think that this is, this is going to be a hit for a lot of people.
Comments? And I think I just would reference that, you know, and I just got here, right? I'm in 10 months. But I think that, you know, there's a real commitment in the Senate, and I think it's shared in the House, to really look at healthcare costs. And, you know, you heard us talk about that at the onset of this. You know, I'm really concerned about a whole host of costs that, you know, I think that Beacon Hill has a bad habit of kicking the can down the road when it comes to a cost perspective. And I look at someone who, you know, I'm starting out, you know, this is the first position I've been elected to at the state level, you know, and I look at, I look at how this all adds up from a financial perspective and, you know, add into it the impact we're going to see of the largest generation, well, the second largest generation in our country's history retiring and aging, and how are we going to support long-term care, and a whole host of these things. And I'm really worried about it. I think that I want to make sure that, I want to make sure though that as we go about doing this, and because so many of the decisions that are made, you know, we're a Commonwealth and Beacon Hill has a lot of sway here, but remember as well, we've got 351 distinct municipalities, and we defer that a lot of control and power is to you folks. And so I really worry and really think about, you know, a big part of my job is how do I give municipalities really the tools they need to meet the mandates that you folks have? And I think that, you know, expansion of room occupancy is not a new tax per se, right? This is actually probably one of the bigger chunks of state aid that this part of the world, at least Cape Cod and the islands, are going to see from the state. And it's significant money. Representative Turner sort of can give you probably the figures better than I can because he's, you know, been at the helm of this. But I think that'll really make a difference for, for folks in our communities, and I think will really help keep people here. And that's why I really support it. I'm, you know, very much committed, I think, as we look at, you know, how do people make a life here and how does my generation make a life here? And I think that that's a piece to that. So, you know, I certainly hear you. I think my aim and the delegation's aim really, I think, is around, you know, providing tools to our communities and the municipalities we represent, and helping you guys make some, you know, tough choices and helping it so folks can live here. So I certainly hear you, but.
And I would add a piece onto that, that actually was something that you said the other day when we met, and what Cleon had mentioned years ago, is we have to remember we have to tax ourselves enough first, because Boston looks down at us and says our taxes are too low and we don't. And we have to take advantage of everything. And I remember that that conversation came up at the 3/4 of a percent on the meals tax that we raised, and there was quite an issue in the town of Dennis of raising it 3/4 of a percent. Nobody notices it, but it brings in $585,000, $400,000 which goes to our capital reserves, and other towns do it. And I think other towns need to also take advantage of that as well. But I'm going to wrap it up, but before I do, I have two seconds because I get to go last. I'm going to throw something out there that I want to think of, and we talked about schools, I'd like to talk about public education for one quick small minute. And I know there's a lot of people in this room that believe truly in public education. And so there are a number of people actually in this room that I do know that have an associate's degree from Cape Cod Community College. So my two cents is for the 15 community colleges. And I think when you guys go to Boston, please remember to fund them, not only the one in West Broadstable, but the one in Greenfield and the one in Bristol. And I see so much money being spent on the UMass system, which is a beautiful system. I went there myself. But also, there's been a lot of money spent in Bridgewater and Dartmouth. And when I saw a full-page ad the other day in the back of the Boston Globe touting the new dorms that are in UMass Boston, I said, great, they should have them, they need them. It's almost a housing crisis that they have fixed there. But when you look at the colleges, particularly the community colleges, we are looked at, as to quote, someone the other day said, "the redheaded stepchild," which I took offense at, but that's okay.
I can't understand why.
The 15 community colleges are looked at as the stepchildren in this Commonwealth, and they take care of so many vital people, so many of those kids. When you, when you talk about the kids that do come out of the tech school, some of them do go to community colleges, and then they work their way on and they get good educations, and education is so important. And really what government really does is protect us and educate us, really, in the two things. So I want to remind you about that when you're voting, that don't spend it all in Dartmouth and Bridgewater, send some here and some other places.
Have you ever heard of Harvard on the Hill?
Yes.
What's Harvard on the Hill?
Go ahead, tell me.
Quincyman Community College in Worcester, of where I went to school. So I'm a community college graduate, I got a lot of my credits toward my associate's through Quincyman Community College. You're going to find, you're going to find that we support, we recognize the excellence that we have here in 4Cs. And to that note, we're going to be dealing with a bond bill on the House side, I believe it's coming up.
For the science building.
This week, for the science building. So you got word on that already. Finally, it looks like we're going to get $40 billion, uh, 40 million, not 40 billion. This isn't the SETI program, this is the $40 million to finally get that science building project on. And President Cox has taken us around.
Yes.
He's been a great advocate as well, and it's long overdue.
And it's a lot of the extra stuff. I remember there was a new vice president of finance that came to the school and she said, you know, we need some new chairs. And she was right, but she didn't realize that we bought them at auction from one of the UMasses and spent the $25 a chair to have them cleaned so we could have them. But you know what? 4Cs deserves the new chairs as well. And that's what I'm going to say.
Absolutely.
But I want to thank the two of you for coming. Thanks for being with us, we enjoyed it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, folks, very, very much. Appreciate it.